We're deleged to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Jenny David here.
Craig Scott. Ron Vaughn.
President.
Brad Newbecker.
President.
Mike Cerber.
President.
Any additions or corrections to the agenda, commissioners? We are avoiding 3A. For appointments, correct?
Correct.
Any other additions or corrections?
None.
Mr. Newbecker? Oh, we don't do motions. Item two, public comment. Is there any public comment on agenda items only in the room? Any public comment on the phone? Item three, appointments, 3B, Oglemont Township, related to tax capture and charge back. I believe this is you guys. Come on up, have a seat. Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
I'm Dennis Stevens, supervisor of Oglemont Township. I know most of you.
You're going to roll, so I'm Oglemont Township DDA Chair. He's got the bus.
Okay. So, I wrote a letter and had a copy of it. I don't know if it's just the board. We are here to ask the county to participate with Oglemont Township DDA in our TIF program, and we would like to capture 100% of the revenue. The county. And in my letter, it states of all the things that we with TIF money and where we're at and projects we're working on currently, with the MDOT, to extend our path from the township to the city limits, which would be M30, and then out to Maverick Street. And we had a meeting with them that, yesterday, day before yesterday, everything is still going right on, and their cost sharing and us, with us, with engineering costs they're helping with, because that's part of the project in 2023. Cold Avenue project through West Branch, so. I just think that we're starting to develop an exit 215, and we would like to extend the pathway to Meyer. It's just important to us, and I think the whole community, that everybody works together. We have a joint DDA venture going on right now with the city of West Branch, West Branch Township. We have joint meetings with DDAs, and so we're really actively in this together to improve our community and our infrastructure. So, that's why we're here. We don't, we don't get a whole lot of money because there's not a lot of new businesses since we started our DDA, so we're fairly limited on our revenue that we bring in. So, Yvonne, do you have anything else that?
Um, I just want to say that the pathway that we did was bare bones. It was bare bones because that was the only, that was the only money that we had. We could only afford to do the path, no lights, no, no kiosk, no signage, except for what MDOT required, because we are in their right of way. The plan would be to go all the way from M30 to Meyer and, you know, in, in the end, and, and put in lighting the way they have in West Branch Township, and possibly have kiosks and benches and that sort of thing. And it took us a long time just to do the half mile that we did because of our income. So, we would really appreciate consideration of what we're here for today.
I think if you were to partner with us, it would give us enough resources, I think, that we could borrow on the project and get it done much quicker. And we would be willing to do that, so we're not going to be five, six, seven years getting the project done. So, that's one of our, one of our sounds.
You're, you're, I'm sorry.
No, that's right.
You're asking for 100% of, if I'm reading this correctly, operating millages through the year 2045, which would include current millages, special millages, and revoted and/or new millages, also the veterans, the veterans 214, and the MSU to be included as well, correct?
Correct.
So, how much revenue would that bring you guys in? Do you know?
I don't know. Right now, where we're at, we're at about 30,000. And I don't think I have a figure on what we get.
I think, I think that we were capturing last year veterans brought in, veterans, veterans 214, $174. Veterans, 534, the county, 13,000. And 911 is separate, so, but then MSU was $318, so you can see their captures.
That was, that's at 50%, right?
It roughly would double, just to, just to a round number. It wouldn't be exactly that, but roughly, what was it said? I would really want to commend the township for your approach, first of all. You know, really appreciate the background that you provided in terms of where the funds are going. This is the way it should work, all right? It doesn't always work this way across the state, so that, you know, I really appreciate your being here today. What this would amount to, obviously, is a board amount of the capture that would be allowed up to the year 2045. And the way to accomplish this, once the board has determined where you want to go with this, is through an interlocal agreement that we would enter into with the township to memorialize this, so that there would never be any question about what was being captured, and we can even list some of the, just in general terms, some of the projects that you have, just to, you know, make a nice neat package out of it. The township is in a position to where the captures right now are going to end after next year. So, that isn't meant to sound an alarm. We, I think, have time on our side to get this done correctly, but now is the time to begin discussing it. And at this point, comes down to a conversation with the commission as to what you'd like to do with their proposal. This is the maximum. There isn't any more that they can capture under the various statutes, but what we're doing right now is about half of what can be captured. So, then it comes down to what is the board comfortable with in terms of the capture that would occur? Once that's established, it's all academic. We will schedule the necessary public hearings. We'll get the documents in front of, not only you, but we'll share those with the township and move it along. There is some noticing requirements, I believe it's like 45 days ahead of a hearing or whatever, but we'll make sure all that's done correctly. Your mission today is to talk about the level of capture you're comfortable with, and then we'll put that in the documents and distribute it.
If this is approved for the 100%, doesn't this open the door for the other DDAs as well to request capturing 100%?
Very good question. Oglemont Township is unique from the other DDAs in that their DDA was established after 1994. There was a statute change in 1994 that said any new TIF districts will have to be brought to, or we can, as the county can opt out of them entirely, and can negotiate with the township about the level of capture that that'll be allowed. The other two DDAs were established before 1994. The laws were much different then. They could establish their DDAs and just begin capturing over the objection of anybody, and they could just do that. So, the other two DDAs can extend their districts with or without county input, with or without any kind of discussion with the county, and just extend them as they did to 2045. I'm not wanting to say that there was anything nefarious there. They just were able to do that, and they.
And Jenny, they already collect 100%. We're the only ones that collect only 50%.
So, at the staff level, as the treasurer and equalization director have mentioned in prior meetings, just at this point, want to get a handle on what the captures are for all of the districts, began looking at the Oglemont Township DDA with the thought that this would be the easiest one to deal with, and it turns out that probably isn't the case. But nevertheless, they were first. There will be analysis done on the other two DDAs too, to make sure we're capturing, or what is being captured is consistent with the formulas that are in the plans, and just give us that confidence moving forward that everything's being done the way it was intended. But yes, I mean, that's why Oglemont Township is here today, because again, our mistaken thought that this would be the easiest one to deal with, and I hope it turns out that you're not, because that would mean there are other complications. You don't want any more complications. You just want to get that number right.
So, is that true? They are collecting 100%?
I believe they are.
The other DDAs are 100%.
So, what would the, if we choose to go with 100% here, what would the revenue loss be to the county?
An additional roughly 15,000 in rough numbers, annual.
Commissioners, thoughts? Commissioner Cerber.
Just need more time to take and digest all of this. I mean, I understand where you guys are coming from, you know, if everybody else is getting 100%, but it doesn't really seem fair that you're stuck at 50%, but.
Can I correct my statement that I just said about this being roughly double? The way the tax capture works is that there's a base year that's established, in case I don't remember the start year of Oglemont Township. 05, sound right?
I think so.
2004, 2005.
So, at that year, the way tax capture works is the county continues to receive the level of assessment or the taxable value at that rate of 2004, 2005. What this does is any additional value of these properties within the district, that's what the capture is. So, the county continues to maintain its base. We're not losing anything. We're just not collecting additional revenue from future development. And the philosophy being that those monies that are being captured are being put into that district to continue to grow what's happening there for the betterment of the community, providing jobs, improving infrastructure, you know, dealing with the trail issue, all the projects they've discussed. So, we're not really losing anything. We're just not realizing the added value of the property assessments for up to 2045.
Commissioner Vaughn?
Well, I definitely think that that end of town, we well know, is gonna, gonna grow and boom, and I think Myers is just the beginning. I think across the street, you're gonna end up seeing a bunch of restaurants or whatever else, and, you know, I very much understand where these folks are coming from. And we do need to expand and bigger and better.
Commissioner Newbecker?
I agree with Ron. I think we do need to invest in that side of town with Meyer coming in now. I'm sure there's some other businesses that would like to come in as well. The lights, the sidewalk, I think that would be a good project. Do you have any plans, like, diagrams of what it's gonna look like, or?
Not yet. I mean, we do for the connection to the city. That's been done, but we wanted to get this taken care of, and then we're gonna reach out to get bids from the surveyors and, and get some cost so that we can hopefully borrow the money and get it done.
Where our trail ends now is at the Welcome Motel, just to the west of their West driveway, and that's kind of a swampy area, wet in there, but we have talked to the MDOT about that, and they feel very confident that, because most of the pathways within the MDOT right of ways. So, we have to always work with MDOT and getting their approvals and plans, and they are willing to help us with whatever they can, so. But they're quite confident that we can get around that lake, whatever you want to call it, swale or flare, without a whole lot of expense, but that's gonna be one of the next step that's getting over that water area. So, that's gonna cost a little bit more.
I appreciate this letter, this information that you did provide. What timeframe are you guys looking for, for a response from us?
As soon as possible.
It's always the answer.
The next tax bill that comes out is, you know, summer taxes coming out, and then you got, you know, winter comes out December 1st, and so it just depends, we want to capture once, one of those July, yeah.
So, we're beyond that time capture. So, um, I, I think since you're the first DDA that, that these guys have initiated conversation, I think we need to be doing the same across the board for all of them.
But understand, you might not be able to. Because they're operating under the pre-1994 rules, they could simply say, this is what we're doing, and that's, that's the end of the discussion. Hopefully, they would come in, hopefully, they would follow the same pattern, and I think that's best for the coordination of all concerned, but they aren't necessarily compelled to come here.
How long before you, but you guys are, still have a conversation with them, correct?
We haven't begun that yet. We.
So, we'll continue to discuss this, and are you guys ready to make a decision now? Would you like to put this on hold, continue to discuss it?
Yeah, I think we should, we need to discuss it a little bit further, but it sounds good.
Well, that's a bad answer. So, continue to talk about it?
Yeah.
Okay. Commissioner Vaughn?
Yeah, we could do a little bit more talking and, you know, but I, I think it's highly likely that for these folks, I think that's the direction it's gonna go.
Commissioner Cerber?
I would agree. It's taken, discuss it, but I'm definitely in favor of you guys 100%.
So, how about?
But I'd like to get some feedback from some of the folks, from a few, from a few people.
Now, you cover. Contest?
The city.
Commissioner Cerber.
And West Branch Township.
Covers that area. Okay. So, why don't we put this on for two weeks at the committee of the whole and continue to talk about it? So, would you like for us to be at that meeting in case you would have questions? It'd probably be beneficial. Okay. Because I'm sure Commissioner Scott will have some questions as well.
He's on our DDA.
Oh. So, was he aware of this?
He's got a bias.
He was aware, yes. Well, maybe he. Because he's been in the meeting. So, he can probably provide us with some feedback as well. Yeah. So, okay. Okay. Perfect. Hey, guys, nice meeting you. I don't think I've met you.
Okay, nice meeting you. I met you over at the clinic one time.
Oh, did you?
So, the next item is for our are we gonna talk about the other item for the township?
Where are we at?
This is the, Karen, you're gonna have to help me with the wording on this. So, in our audit, there was a quote due from that's been reported for a number of years concerning a. This dates back to 2011. It is, was reported in the audit in, in that year, and it's been in the audit each year, although not necessarily pointed out during the presentations of the audit. And this concerns water assessment that was on a piece of property that went to, went to the, pardon me? Yeah, went to the foreclosure process, and there are actually specific statutes that address assessments for utilities, water in particular in this case. And there was about a $48,000 assessment that the county paid as part of our normal settlement process, but the statutes say the township has to pay that money back to the county for that assessment, and it's in very clear black and white. We've actually gotten our attorney opinion about this. This is not something you can waive. So, you know, the township had some advice that was provided to them, I don't know, three, four, five years ago about how to approach this, but it really was kind of murky, continued to be on our books, and again, in Karen's diligence in trying to get all the books straightened out, found this and said, oh, we've got to do something about it, and that's very true. The board cannot waive the $48,000, but the board can waive any interest accrual that would, that's allowed under the statute. And our suggestion is that we go ahead and do that and allow the township to pay this off over, let me say, five years, if that sounds doable with the township. The point is not to be ceded to the township. Nobody did anything here with intent to, you know, hold money that they shouldn't. And I think it was just a simple, it's just a human error, misunderstanding of how that particular statute works, and I think just for financially, the township, doing that over a five-year period, again, with the assurance from the township that that's doable, that that's probably the best option, and then it gets off our books, it's not reported in the audit anymore, everything is resolved. So, I just would suggest that that's the approach we take.
And you guys are agreeable to this?
Yes. I think I'd be near about $5,000 a year for five years, or $10,000.
Yeah.
Questions?
We would, we would like to pay this back interest-free.
So, questions?
Complete agreement, interest-free in five years? If it's doable for you, Dennis? Very agreeable with that, so. I agree with that.
Perfect. So, we, we probably need a resolution for this, correct?
Yes.
So, we'll put that on for next Thursday?
It's in my notes now.
Anything else to add to that?
I don't think so. I think that should take care of it. If we owe money, we need to pay it, so that's what we're in now.
Perfect. Thank you.
That'll help offset some of the tip.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And next, we have Aubrey Gilbert, Sheriff. The jail ventilation system cleaning and the school resource deputy agreement. Morning, guys.
Morning, morning. Another big ticket item. Good morning, Sean.
That price?
Yeah.
From the, yes. It was a lot.
Basically, what happened, Lieutenant Ozer to contact me, and there had been discussions in the previous administration for a ventilation system cleaning. He contacted me and said the vents and everything were starting to show discharge, blackness around the vents. And he inquired about getting it done, or at least getting estimates. I contacted the local HVAC companies, best cleaning, a couple of the other ones, they won't touch it because of the size and type of it. So, they referred me to Stanley Steamer to get a quote type of thing. I did some online research, saw that the Gaylord Stanley Steamer had a little bit better reviews and star ratings and whatnot, so I reached out to them. Their crew came and met me, and I got to see parts of the jail that I've never seen before. I didn't realize how big that system was and all the nooks and crannies that you gotta access that to. But we went around the whole facility, counted up vents and fresh air, and got up on the roof and walked around up there. That was fun. And basically, they're saying three to four days to complete this with a couple different crews. I didn't get more than one quote. I talked to Tim a little bit. I, well, the only thing we could do was pit Stanley steamers against each other, and I wasn't real sure if that was gonna be something that we really want to get into, calling sagging out, I'm sure they're gonna be all close to the same type of price range, so. As far as funding it, you know, the only thing I could think of was take it out of commissary, take that money, because it is for the employee and the inmates' best interest, health and safety. So, we just take that money from commissary to cover this cost, and the logistics of it are gonna be kind of difficult, because we'll have to move prisoners from different blocks when they're working in there, and we'll have security doors open with the big cleaning things in, but.
I was gonna ask that, if you had to evacuate the building, why you did that?
Yeah, well, they'll have to strategically move over those three days to the different cell blocks and stuff, as far as housing and making sure we're keeping an eye out which doors they have open with the cleaning equipment coming in from their trucks, so. So, we might incur, you know, staffing levels are gonna have to be increased to account for that on those three days, and so we'll have to do some logistics to make it happen safely and securely. Hopefully, our fence will be fixed by them, so we could close off that Sallyport area, maybe give them some outdoor time while they're doing the cleaning, but.
$26,500. You know when the last time it was done?
All my research, I didn't see that it was ever done.
Probably never.
Oh, really?
This will be the first time that the system itself has actually been cleaned.
I actually, when I worked there, I took the inmates and set up ladders and cleaned what they could reach from inside the cell blocks. Well, I had them do that in some of the evenings. They're pretty filthy.
You guys are paying for it.
Yeah.
Needs to be done. The only things that puts about it, I remember the old jail. Boy.
I'm just wondering if we ought to set up an annual cleaning on it. Might be cheaper.
Well, I was gonna say, you know, you might want to discuss it with them and see you know, every, whether it's annual, three, every three years, you know, see what.
They might tell you that, yeah, within every five years, it needs to be done.
So, they came up and looked at it, or they just look at the blueprints, or what they do to give you that estimate?
They, they set up a team, so there was three of them that came up, and we walked through the whole facility, and one of the head guy and myself went up onto the roof, we had to get the ladder, and we walked around and counted all the different things on the roof that were gonna have to be cleaned, and so.
I think while we got them here, we'll talk to them about industry standard for cleaning this. I don't know that this level of cleaning would need to be done annually, but probably every five years or whatever, but I would be curious to what the industry recommends on something like that.
If we're gonna, yeah, I agree. If we're gonna go to this level and get it all cleaned out this one time like that, it would be a good conversation to have with them. Oh, okay, let's talk maintenance so that we don't, we have to do like this level every time.
And then we can prepare for it from a budget standpoint.
Commissioner Newbecker, did you have something? Mr. Vaughn?
Needs to be done.
Did they say what the timeframe was, that they would be able to do this? Is there?
I haven't really reached out as far as their schedule yet, because I wanted to have this conversation obviously before, so, I mean, we'll forward the information once we get an idea if we're gonna move forward with this, see. But they were saying a three to four day event to complete the project, just a matter now what their schedule, their business up there out of Gaylord.
So, do you need this on a resolution as well, correct?
You. Resolution will have a couple of components. We'll mention it's coming from commissary, obviously, the price. We'll want to waive bidding requirement in the purchasing policy to sole source this so that you can get it going, but we'll make sure those elements are covered.
Anything else, guys? Hey, next, we got the school resource deputy agreement.
Well, the agreement we got, we got it back from our attorneys, and it, it looks pretty good. I believe Tim agrees with it, and then I, I reached out to Mr. Pereira. He looked at it, he thought it was fine. It's just a matter of money, you know, we gotta come down with a wage, or that's the big hangup. And it looks like realistically, it, once we get it going, it'll probably be next year, because we've got two years, or two months, and to find somebody, train somebody, so there's a lot of, a lot of realistically, I would think next year.
From a dollar standpoint, I went through the, the obligation to paying the officer, and clearly, we have a scale, you know, an entry level up to, I don't know, we went to five years, whatever that is. So, I chose a number that was right in the middle, calculated what, you know, maximums, if you will, would be for health insurance and retirement and so on. And if we wanted to go with a flat number, 75,000 would pretty well cover that. It will be, our expenses will be a little above or a little bit below, depending on who is assigned to the position itself, and this would very likely serve as the boilerplate for when we get to the West Branch Road City School next year, that they would be asked to sign a similar agreement to this, same pricing.
Right now, West Branch gives us 50?
57,000, and the 75,000, that's based on a full year full year wages and benefits.
Because right now, West Branch covers them the nine months, and we cover them the remaining time, correct?
Right.
The county does.
Yes.
I'd like to see if you can do a three-year agreement with them, so we're not stuck with, I know the city of West Branch just did that, they negotiated with West Branch Road City for a school here in town, a three-year, so that you know that that program is gonna last three years, so when you hire Joe Blow, he's not worried, you know, you've got some job security and. he's not worried, you know, you've got some job security and, and, you know, you're gonna train somebody if they come from another agency. Let's say they're not hanging out there, you know, worrying about their job from year to year, you know, you're at least locked in for three years, got some continuity there.
Does, does the township pay for year-round for that? You said the township and.
No, no. Is, it's, isn't it dependent upon what we're, what the counties?
They put a no-compete clause in there, so they charge fifty-seven-one for the contract. And then going into next year, depending on what the county negotiates with the school districts, they would match the request that same level.
So you're leaving it up to us?
Kinda.
As far as the, the value of the money, um, but it is a three-year contract, it's the agreed to, to sign. So we have that stability for at least three years if we hire another officer.
And I think that's a great, I think that was great.
When's the villages, the villages for Woodmore Prescott's up on the ballot here? In May, correct? Correct, yeah. So I'm wondering if that's gonna be an issue if that doesn't pass, did Mr. Pereira say anything about that?
He didn't mention that, no.
Has he been hit with that figure?
Not yet, no.
Okay.
Commissioner Becker?
Well, I, I just think that, uh, a two or three-year contract would be nice, but we also have to consider these two villages coming back around in less than like two years. So there's really no stability there unless those villages pass.
Correct.
So I'd say maybe a two-year right now, based on the road patrol village. Don't got that money for at least another two years. Then if this one passes with Woodmore Prescott, then you're in the clear, I think, but, uh, good program and hopefully we pass those villages and.
What's your thoughts as far as cost? Are, are, are you agreeable to the nine months or the twelve months, the fifty-seven or the seventy-five?
Well, I guess my question on that is, the other three months. If you got, I mean, I'm sure you'll have work for them, but other avenues of, you know, basically, marine patrol or.
We could keep them busy.
Like I say, you could definitely keep them busy, so. So it's still, still a, a very much an asset to, uh, our community after the fact. Yeah, I'm in favor for it.
I mean, as long as we have a need for them, um, so, you know, it could be, or be.
Could be road patrol, I mean, they're, police officers, put them out on the road, you know?
I, I think we should try to get the full year.
I agree with that, yeah.
I think we should try, if we don't, we don't, but I think we need to try, I, I, I do, cause that is a huge cost to the county and we're talking about more and more. And I think this is very much needed, um, very much needed as school resource, I think we need to definitely keep our kids safe. Um, and Woodmore Prescott is a long ways away from anybody, as we know. But I, I really think, and especially if these villages go through with the school and they have, uh, funding. If they don't, that's a whole new ballgame. But if they have funding, I, I think we really need to try and get that twelve months, cause that's a lot of money for us.
Well, in actuality, I think it's a selling point for the schools and their villages to, you know, know that their kids are taken care of too.
There's a lot of controversy on that village over there right now.
Well.
Hopefully it goes through.
Maybe, but.
Well, with summer school activities, maybe we can assign them to carry over whatever's going on at the school.
Sure.
Sure, some of us. Bank for the buck.
Right, correct. At least a little closer observation, that's, that's, that's true, a lot is going on.
You could just sign them to that area. Go over to school, any, any, you know, summer activities, anything that's going on on the property, they could still be there for that.
What's the next step here?
Uh, what I would suggest is we put the resolution on for next week that, um, lays out this as the, the proposal, I guess, if you will, with schools. And if we're looking at the full amount, I'll insert that, um, as far as multi-year. I'd say just multi-year a little bit that way and then still discuss how many years.
Or do we wanna wait until after the village vote? Cause I mean, we're not in a big yank for this right now, are we, or?
We don't have anybody right now that we.
Right, so maybe we should wait until after.
Sheriff can speak to this, but I think they've got a different source of funding for this, right? Yeah, so it's not dependent on the.
At-risk fund, which, what I, what I was told, every school gets a school district gets that, and that's what they put.
Getting us, but they haven't been pulling out of their own funding for this, correct?
It's an at-risk fund, so they can, they can use it for any, anything that they feel that the children are at risk, that's how it's laid out.
When I talked to Mr. Pereira about this, he didn't feel like funding would be a concern. Obviously, he wanted a similar contract compared to Oklahoma Heights, but he didn't feel like funding would be an issue, unless I misinterpreted him, which I don't think I did.
That's what I kinda gathered too.
So I think we need to try for the full amount first at, at both.
How long is our contract with, uh, West Branch?
I think it's just a year.
It's a year, this year, so we'll be going back for negotiation to the salary range.
Salary range, two or three years.
And I would think that funding's still there for the schools for that at-risk, nothing has changed there, anything that's worse.
And West Branch Road City agreed to the three-year for the officer. Here, I'm sure they do the same thing at the Heights, I mean, why would you differentiate between two different buildings, you know?
Well, there should just be some wording in there that if it can be three years, but if something changes, obviously, this can be.
Sixty days.
Something, I don't know what, but.
That might be in that contract somewhere, isn't it?
Yeah, and we can, in the rest of this, say up two, three years, and that'll give you the, the cushion.
Yeah, I just think that, that, well, if we do it, we wanna make sure that West Branch and Woodmore, similar contracts.
Absolutely. Okay, so I, I, do you, does this have to be on for, for, uh, next week?
It can be on whenever you want it.
So the election's in what, two weeks, so?
Well, I know, but if this doesn't have anything to do with, I guess our question is, is does this have anything to do with the village?
And maybe they might feel more comfortable if the village does pass going into it, though, is all what I'm saying. I don't know.
Those still affect us. Is that unless they pay for the officer for the whole year, and then unless they're a part-time employee, they would be in the union, right?
They'd be in the union.
Oh, yeah. So, you know, if we didn't have road patrol, would we still be able to keep that officer?
The officer would be funded.
Right.
Yes.
On talent seniority wise.
That's a whole new ballgame.
Somebody else in the, the job, yeah.
If you have to let that person go because of seniority, then, you know, we still fill position, I suppose, but if we still have enough people left over, but. I just, I just don't.
Are they able to accumulate comp time when they're doing this forty hours, I read in here? Oh, I don't know exactly what it said, but something about it was about forty hours in this contract. Are, are the, the officer that, there's a sign to this, are they able to accumulate comp time if, if they're following this contract, which is the forty hours per week, they can, how?
Well, they work over, over hours, maybe to a basketball game or something, they could comp that, or they have to work over for any given reason. With the school, uh, school hours.
Because in this contract, it looks like you're supposed to, uh, um, what's the wording I'm looking for, they're supposed to basically their hours, this, it discusses that, but then basically, oh, what am I trying to say here? They're supposed to adjust their hours, so it didn't say anything about that.
Right, so the individual assigned to this would be subject to all the rules in the union contract. And in the contract, we address comp time, we address vacations, we address scheduling, all of that. So then it becomes some, uh, uh, coming on the budget administrators to monitor that time and to make sure we're not going over whatever it is that we end up deciding it's the, the cost for this. And so, um, and I'm very confident with our new overtime system, you'll be able to do that, uh, way easier than ever experienced in the past. Uh, but it's just been a matter of explaining to the officer, while you've got, you know, forty-two hours this week, we need you to comp these two. And we would like for you to take, you know, two hours off at a, I don't know, following week, whatever our criteria is in there, there's a uh, a, a time period that they can carry the comp forward. But it would be easiest for that employee in that case to, in a slow week, you know, take two comp hours rather than dealing with the overtime. But that comes down to the, the sheriff and the under sheriff to administer those hours, make sure that we're within budget and pretty confident you'll have the tools there to do that and do it well.
Yeah, it says they may cause the resource officer to flex their schedule for that day. That's what I was, my questions were, full-time basis of eight hours on those days and during those hours that school's in session. Okay. Any other questions, do you guys wanna put this on? Maybe we can ask Mr. Pereira to come here as well in two weeks to discuss.
Yeah.
Funding, are you guys okay with that? Okay. Anything else, guys? Thank you.
So that'll be a community whole item in two weeks?
Yeah.
That's supposed to be my question, okay. I'll reach out to him then, Tim, okay?
Thanks, guys. Three E, we have Karen Piglowski, County Treasurer, related financial depository policy amendment. Good morning.
Good morning, everybody. I'm here today because I wanna create some diversity in our investment portfolio. We, earlier in the year, um, created a financial depository policy, which sets my limitations to just two local banks, Huntington and Merkentown. It's not a very diverse portfolio. And the Huntington, uh, bank rates on CDs, point zero one percent, I'm getting peanuts. I had a CD, actually two CDs with them that matured last week, each of her approximately a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. The return on that sixty-day investment was two dollars and eight cents. I need diversity, I need to broaden our horizons. I would like to ask that you add Michigan class, um, to our financial depository policy, allowing me to invest in a local government investment pool that has competitive rates. It is triple A rated, the highest rating you can get from a ratings company. They have very outstanding credit quality. No minimum balances, uh, interest is added daily. I can't say enough good things and, um, I would like to see you add that next week as a motion to update the, uh, financial depository policy. To be in compliance with their participation agreement, I do need to add some specific wording to our investment policy. So I'm gonna ask that you amend our investment policy to include a clip that is straight out of the, um, Public Act twenty language under the Urban Cooperation Act of nineteen sixty-seven. In regards to inter-local government agreements, I will give that wording to Tim to have added to our investment policies so that we are in compliance with their participation agreement. So requesting two motions at your meeting next week. Any questions on those?
What did you say the Michigan class rate of return was?
Yeah, so I have, compared to the Huntington bank, it's point zero one percent on CDs. Um, I checked the rate because this is a daily changing rate, the rate yesterday was point four seven seven five. And they credit your account daily with that interest income.
Something like a four hundred and eighty percent increase.
It is huge, it's huge.
Ten bucks, from, from one peanut, you get five.
Yes, so I need diversity, I need more interest income, and I think this is the first step in, in creating those changes. And I'll probably continue throughout the year to come back to you, because we should have at least five different items in this portfolio and this'll be number three. And while I'm here at the table, if I can bend your ear for just a moment, because our boy is on your agenda later today. So again, ask you to consider appropriating funds to the land bank. Partner with the land bank to help stabilize property values in our community. Help promote economic development and help revitalize these neighborhoods that are in need. We have great commercial development going on and we can't forget about the neighborhoods that are falling behind with blight and abandonment, so. Help me, help me make those changes in our community. Can, consider that request, please, make it a priority.
Do you guys have any questions related to this, this Michigan class?
That's your job.
Thank you.
Is there any other local banks that you can add to that as well, like the credit union?
Not at this time, Jenny, because I wanna do my research, I wanna see what their terms are. The CD market is lagging far behind the market interest changes, but the Fed rate is, you know, the FUDs are making changes all throughout this year, there's going to be incremental changes. The CD market lag behind, banks lag behind in those changes, so I need to create more diversity, not just a CD here, a CD there. I wanna expand and grow our interest income that has been completely flat and historically low these last two years. So I'll continue to do my investigating, I will bring that information back to you and we'll continue to grow our portfolio.
I, I just think about this Michigan class is, cause their rate changes on a daily basis, they're gonna basically be able to keep as interest rates rise, they'll continue to rise too, instead of being stuck in a fixed rate, you know, like you're with the other two financial institutions.
And there's over six hundred and fifty municipalities that are part of this group. And I'd like to say that Maggie Robinson, our former county treasurer, was, um, wise enough to invest in this. We were the thirty-eighth county to join this, this investment group back in her days, so.
When's the last time we were involved with this investment group? When she departed?
At least a decade.
Is there any downfall to this?
No.
They have the highest ratings you can get, Jen, highest.
So I'm asking.
Yep, triple A by standard imports.
So why, you know why we stopped?
Because your previous administrator was not proactive in investing in this type of portfolio.
Was the board, I'm sorry, was the board attempting to, to stay local? I mean, I.
I can't speak for what his reasons were.
Where's this, where's this location, is there a location for this institution?
They're in Michigan, Michigan-based, they meet all of the Public Act twenty.
Right, where, where in Michigan?
I couldn't find it, I love.
Specifically where are they located out of?
Where they actually.
Grand Haven.
Grand Haven, Michigan, okay.
Yeah, Grand Haven. Yeah, the Gail I was working with is out of DeWitt, my representative.
I said no cost, didn't I say that?
Yes, there's no fees, interest paid daily.
All game.
Okay.
It's a no-brainer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Three E, we got Ryan Veder, is Mr. Veder here?
He's not.
Does he, you know, he's on the agenda?
Well, yeah, you, uh, you just told him that this would.
I did, I had a question too on that, I was gonna ask him to define, I was reading that over, where is it? To define the recreational vehicle, is there a definition and I couldn't find it of what?
There is. It includes, includes four-wheelers and snowmobiles and watercraft.
I couldn't find it in what was in front of us, was it there and I just didn't see it?
It's not what's in front of you, it's in the book.
Already out, okay.
I think that should be in here, though, in this.
Next.
They don't, they don't put the definitions in the, in the, the definitions are in the front of the book and then.
Did you guys wanna talk about this, even though he's not here?
We've already said no, what's, what's there to discuss? Seriously.
What changes, cause I think that's what he wanted to know as far as, is what changes for you guys to fully discuss?
No, that's all there is to it.
So right now, okay, we're gonna move on then. Jack Nichols, Veterans Affairs Director, was he supposed to be here as well?
He, he was aware of it, this is that appointment that's been sort of hanging out there until his veterans board can be, make it official. So you've actually already seen the, the application once. If I attached the application or not, but Jeff, uh, provided a lot of background, uh, for which seat and who it is and.
It's here.
Yeah, it's.
He's already on.
So this is just sort of like a renewal?
Yeah.
Reappointment, yeah.
Okay, so there's no issues with that, correct, guys? We'll put that on.
Randy?
Are you finding it, Mr. Becker?
I thought I was able to send this to you guys earlier, you know?
Oh, thank you, sir.
I had, uh, reached out to our attorney, Tim Brown, and one of the things I've thought about doing for our office is to have an intern that would come in and serve an internship. And I've had a couple people actually showing some interest that want to learn, like what our office does, they can learn to be an assessor. And so Tim had drafted an agreement that they use with other counties, kinda just a boilerplate that they're a, that they're not gonna be an employee of the county, they're.
that they're a, that they're not going to be an employee of the county, they're not going to get paid, there doesn't lead to a job. It's just, they would be like a summer intern, they'd work for the summer, get some training, they can use that when they go to apply for another job or something like that. It's beneficial to them, but it's not just to make sure they're not guaranteed they're going to get a job in six months because they were an intern for free for the summer. But I know I'd spoken with one of the teachers at Ogama Heights and they had said that the intern programs might be good for some of their students in the summer intern program. And so I would like your permission to see about having summer intern.
So that was my question. Are you looking at students? Are you looking?
You, you know, it could be assumed right now, I've got a, a young man that's, that's working and he's really interested in doing it. He wants to be an assessor. He wants to try and learn and I, and I thought about seeing what his schedule would be, if he would be interested in that or but if it's something we could do it on, on kind of a regular basis and we can open up for students in the future or you know, if it's not really going to work with him, we could, you know, I could reach out to schools and see about an intern for one of the students.
How long is the intern? What's the timeframe on a period of time you're looking at?
Just basically the summer months, so it's more, normally be like a summer intern, so you know, three to four hundred hours, something like that.
That should be in here, don't you think?
We can put a timeframe on it.
I think this is great. Especially when you're such, so short assessors.
Yeah, it gives them a little bit of experience to learn kind of what are a lot of people don't have any clue what assessors do, so by coming in, they can learn a little bit on the program. You know, they can learn people coming in and when Missy goes out and do, does fieldwork, it would be nice sometimes for her to have somebody with her as well, so she's not always by herself. I go out sometimes, but I don't have the time to go out all the time. And so I think it's probably better for a praiser if she has somebody with her. Out doing fieldwork.
Has, has the department ever had an intern prior?
Not that I'm aware of.
Do you see any issue with this, Tim?
No, I would actually encourage it. It's a great idea.
Commissioners?
Yeah, so even beyond their department, other departments wanted to do something like this.
Well, I was surprised at one of the equalization directors meetings, the two of the directors for the fairly large county, one does several counties and they both started out as GIS interns for equalization departments. It's how they got into assessing, they made it their careers. Because they it could open our eyes to an opportunity for jobs that are out there, because there is a shortage of assessors.
Absolutely.
I think it's great. Gives them an opportunity to figure out if it's their cup of tea or not.
Exactly.
Before they take the plunge.
Is this going to be like posted? Is this just to make sure that whoever's interested has a fair shot at this?
You know, I'm not sure how they normally do this and, and maybe I can seek Tim's guidance if they've done it in the other counties and how best to to do this to, you know, especially if we're going to ask for school students to how would they give others, give students the opportunity to apply for it, I guess would be probably beneficial. Basically, we're taking applications for internship program. Put it on the website, maybe not as well as the school counselors. Yeah, guidance counselors, pay it out to them.
See how many interests you have. You might be surprised, hopefully. Thank you. And then you have land divisions.
Land divisions. I've also, I get permission from the board to contact Tim about the agreements. We work with the local units for the clerical work that we do for them and the land divisions. In researching the land divisions, one of the problems, the, the statute reads that we may do land divisions for any of the local units that are populations under twenty-five hundred people. Several of our townships have more than twenty-five hundred residents and so they're, technically it's not legal for us to do their land divisions. The other issue is we have to look at the local zoning and I know we just, I had an issue at United, a we're, we're going to have a land division ordinance for our board to approve. Right now, I don't have an actual ordinance that we're operating under that spells out how we handle the land divisions. It's just kind of how the just how John set it up and how we're doing it. So we're going to formalize a, an ordinance and I'll be bringing that to you. But some of the questions are if they've got their local zoning, we have to review their local zoning. I don't know their local zoning at all. And so one of the, I denied an appeal for Edwards Township and their zone community. And it came down to their, their standard, their zoning standard for how to determine with the depth is different than what the statute is that I would use for land divisions. And so ultimately, they're going to prove it anyhow because of the zoning aspect of it. Because their zoning definition is different than ours. So I guess I'm kind of asking the board's guidance on this. Should the communities that are zoned be doing their own land division? Information instead of the county doing it for them? I would think.
Why would they not?
I, I, I mean, I come from a school to county, all the townships do, most areas of the state, the townships do land divisions. It's not the county's responsibility and and I don't have a problem doing it, but I, we need the tools and place. We need an ordinance. So when I deny somebody, I can give them specific on that ordinance, why we're denying it and what their appeal process is. Right now, they don't have an appeal process.
If they're doing their own zoning and we're utilizing their zoning guidelines, but yet we're doing the land divisions. Couldn't, if the zoning is wrong, then couldn't we be wrong? Like who's going to be liable for?
Well, it became issue. I denied it under statute on the width-to-depth ratio when I looked at it and assessing, we use effective front footage all the time. We take the average width or the average depth on a lot. On the Edwards Township zoning, their definition of lot width is thirty-five feet from the center line of the road is a lot width for that lot. And so in this case, the lot tapers like this. I use an average. There's, and so it meets the ratio under their standards, but not in what I would use as a standard for that. And I don't even know what their standards are. I mean, I, I don't, in the county, all the others that we do where we have county zoning, Ryan Veder reviews them as well. We both sign off, so you have zoning approval and our equalization approval. But I, I guess that's what I'm questioning is should we be going to those townships? And should they be doing, if they're zoned and they have their own plan, maybe they should be looking at the divisions to make sure their approval process is correct. And, you know, we can help them where we need to, but but I really personally think they should be reviewing their own applications instead of us doing it.
Right now, you guys are doing it?
Yes, we have.
And there's three townships that are doing their own zoning, correct? Three?
Two townships zoned, Edwards and West Branch Township is zoned.
And that's it? I thought there was one more.
I know the two.
City of West Branch.
Yeah, I think both cities are zoned.
I don't know if rural cities.
Edwards and what else did you say?
Edwards, West Branch Township.
I get all that.
In the city of West Branch.
So what's your, your take on this?
I, I think there's a efficient solution in that this actually works both ways, but in the case of the township with its own zoning, that part of the criteria for approval at the county is that the zoning administrator signs off. It says it's consistent with their zoning ordinance. If it's not, then that perhaps is reason to deny. Other side of that coin is townships will sometimes have you know, planned unit developments or other types of proposals that come through. It would be very nice if the township would also ask for the county approval for the standard on the depth is a very good example. And if the county says it doesn't meet statute or meet something that they would deny it at their end too. So we can't obviously force that. That's maybe something that to consider. But tell me on the statute, is, is, does the statute have a width-to-depth ratio in it?
Yeah, it's one to four width. As a state statute.
So Lynn, this is interesting and this would be good for Tim Perone to look at. Which takes precedence? Does the zoning ordinance take precedent over land division or is it the other way?
In the gentleman that we've, and I've had multiple discussions with him, he's a developer from downstate and he's splitting a parcel for his father. But there's a subsection five in the statute that says that the, it must be approved by local zoning. And so what it came down to is the Edwards Township zoning has a different definition of what the lot width is than what statute just says one to four. As an assessor, we always use an effective front foot and that's what I did. But their zoning actually spells out the definition of their front foot, right? And so using that definition, the lots wider at this end, then they both meet the criteria for the one to four. So I, you know, I, and the township was going to prove it, if, so I signed approval yesterday. Because it met the other criteria in the township zoning is going to sign on it anyhow. I mean, but part of the problem with our, it not having an ordinance right now, if I deny a land division, they don't have an appeal process. They were going to go to the Edwards Township zoning board of appeals, but supervisor says, well, how can we, how can we override a county denial? You know, but if it meets their zoning terms and their technology, in, in ultimately, it's the, you know, I feel township, if, if they don't have that's your thing. It's if, if you're using that definition, then it doesn't violate state law. That's why I was dying, because the way I interpret the law, it's one to four exceeded that. So I denied it, but when you have to look at the local zoning, then it makes it a little different.
Is this being brought to light now because of what you just talked about the Edward Township? Is this why you're bringing this to us?
Because we, I've already had discussions with Mr. Perone on doing the agreements with the townships that we're going to do. He needed questioning immediately the fact that the statute says that we can by agreement do units under twenty-five hundred population. But I know West Branch Township, Mills Township are over twenty-five hundred and possibly Hill Township, I'd have to get their stats, but and, and he said we could probably still do them by agreement, but, but the language in the statute says populations under twenty-five hundred may have the county do them.
So if they get approval to do the zoning and the land divisions, then the county can't do it as, no say over anything, correct?
Right.
We lose all input.
And so that's why I'm bringing it to you guys and, and I don't necessarily need a decision today, but just if, if you think about it, how do we want to proceed with this if we're going to still do the land divisions? And how to proceed with them.
So is our attorney recommending us do this or recommending against us?
I didn't talk to the attorney.
He hasn't recommended either way. What he's recommending is we need to have an ordinance, the county has an ordinance, and we have to have an agreement with each of the local units to do it. And so what he'd like to do is do a boilerplate agreement of how we would administer, administer it. And then we'd have to send the agreements out to the sixteen units and have them approve them.
But can't these, do these three other areas have their own zone, since they're doing their own zonings? Is that going to be different than the boilerplate we're talking about?
Well, that's why, it would be a different contractor, would they handle their own? Right now, Horton Township is doing their own.
Right.
They're, we're not doing theirs at this point. Because the townships have the right to enact their own ordinance and do that. We don't have to do it for them. They can do their own. Right now, only one of the townships is.
So Horton right now is doing their own zoning and land divisions.
Well, they're, they're, they're not zoned. So they have somebody doing their land divisions, but they're not running by county zoning to make sure it proves county zoning.
I'm totally confused. Are you confused?
Zoning is totally separate from the land divisions.
Right.
And, but if a local unit has zoning, they're supposed to comply with their zoning regulations. But I don't have their zoning regulations to review. I mean, we've been having the zoning administrators look at them and they review them. They also sign it as well.
So are you, are you reviewing Edwards in the West Branch Township in the city as well or no?
Yes.
So you, right now, you're reviewing everybody?
Review them all. Ryan Veder reviews any that have county zoning. And the ones that West Branch Township does, their zoning administrator comes in, reviews the application, they sign it as well. So does Edwards. This is the first time where we had one where I denied it and the Edwards Township zoning minister says it meets our criteria and they approve it. And ultimately, because of the definition, it, it does meet their criteria. So they approve the land division that's moving forward.
So now what?
What Randy's saying is if we had an ordinance that defined what that was, then his interpretation would probably prevail at that point, but right now, there's no fallback and there's no appeal, which is very important.
Yeah, there's no appeal. If I deny something, there's, they don't have anywhere to go to say, to have an appeal, which in the land division ordinance, you have to have an appeal process. And I, I'll, an example, our township, when we have an appeal, if I deny it as the supervisor and I'm the assessor, so I do the land divisions. If I deny one, they can come to the township board and state their course and the, and the township board can approve it or deny it. But in the way we're doing it right now, because we don't have an ordinance, there is no appeal process.
So basically, we need to.
We need to develop an ordinance.
Ten on that, but the question came up with the zoning should, and we might have to modify it a little bit if they have a local zoning or.
We don't as a rule want the responsibility to interpret their ordinance. If it's their ordinance, they interpret it, tell us what the answer is.
And that might be the better solution to have them review them and do that on the ones that are zoned. Because they've already taken the steps to have a land plan and, and a, and a plan for their community, so it should match their plans, not necessarily county. I mean, the townships aren't zoned and because we have county zoning, I think it does kind of make sense for the county to do it. And the county zoning administrators sign off on it, we, we approve it that way. But those that have their own zoning should probably be doing their own reviews and you know, on the land.
I think they should be, if they, that's what they that's why they enacted their zoning ordinances, that they would have local control over it, you know, so they ought to be doing the whole schmear. I think they should be doing all of it.
I like checks and balances.
The state statute.
What's that?
Could our ordinance just basically mirror the state statute?
Yeah, the, and, and I've talked with Tim and I'm going to send him a, you know, MTA has a really good, just basic template. It's about three pages for land division ordinance. It's what most townships in the state use. And there'll be some changes because we have county zoning review. There's some things that will be added to it and modified from it. But it would be based off that template. You know, and, and I know you say about the review, but the reality is, all of the townships can act their own ordinance and they're responsible for it. They have the right to do this if they want, like Horton Township did. They're doing their own, they're doing their own reviews and we have no control over that. It is a local control. We can only do it if they give us permission to do it for them. And that's where the agreement will come in with the local units. And right now, we don't have agreements for that.
So I think we need to get with our attorney and continue to discuss.
We've already started this process. Tim gave me permission and Tim, and I have had some, Tim Perone and I have had some discussion back and forth, but I just I, I kind of wanted to talk to you at this time about zone communities, whether we should be doing it because I don't, you know, it's.
You don't know what?
I just personally think if they've taken the time, they have their own zoning ordinance, they have their own code enforcement officials, they have all that in place, that this is something that they should be doing. Because then they can make sure it meets their criteria and their plan.
I agree. I've already said that. They should be doing it.
Questions? What do we need to do?
Send Randy back to the attorney and drop what we need to approve.
You got it.
Bring him back.
Bye, Randy. Item. Discussion item, this is your twenty twenty-three budget calendar.
You have a draft calendar in front of you, mirrors what we've done for the last couple of years. We'll begin with the review of the fees in June. Under the schedule, department heads would be required to submit their budget requests by June twenty-fourth. We will take through July eighth, review it administratively and bring it to you on July eleventh for your first review. This might be the year we actually meet all of our deadlines. Pretty confident in that, that, believe me, the B S N A system makes this so much more efficient. It's going to be this is, I'm really looking forward to it this year. Again, this is getting us to September, so we have the budget adopted before October one. Very confident, well, we can meet that schedule.
So according to this right now, at the, the next meeting, you're looking for approval of fiscal year twenty twenty-three budget calendar, correct? Just, this looks fine to me. I looked it over.
It's good.
Hopefully, we can meet the deadlines.
Yeah.
And you'll.
We only missed one, didn't we?
You'll keep us informed in the loop?
Will, and talking with Will, and, um, talking with, um, outside of meetings with commissioners, um, the feeling about the ARPA meeting we had, uh, you know, a few meetings ago where that's all we talked about. It was suggested that maybe we set aside a committee, the whole meeting, maybe deal with our initial business in the first hour or so, but then dedicate the rest of the meeting just to going over the budget proposals, which we've not done before.
Absolutely.
Bring in departments, they can talk about their proposals and, you know, really educate ourselves.
Or even a separate meeting on it.
Or even a separate meeting, yeah.
Like you, what we did with the, I think, yeah, I think separate meeting, if, if we did a Friday morning like we did with the ARPA stuff, and that kind of fits into your schedule, Friday is usually good for you, so.
I agree with the separate meeting. I, I think it, uh, the importance here is.
Specifically dedicated to that discussion.
I do.
All right.
Okay.
Plan on that, we'll figure out a date and, you know, when the time comes.
Perfect.
And get it scheduled.
County building security policy.
All right, um, I'm going to ask that we forego this discussion. Uh, I was hoping that we'd have, uh, uh, input back from the courts before today, and they are looking at it. They just, we don't have the reply yet. Uh, our, um, objective coming out of the security meeting, uh, was to get this moving, to get it in front of the board, uh, sooner rather than later, so we, we bet that. Uh, but we cannot, in my opinion, move forward without the input of the courts, because after all, this is founded in the administrative orders of the court that they have to follow. So I just suggest we'll put that off until May fifth.
Well, one thing that there was a question this morning, and, uh, actually the security officer down there, uh, noticed a vehicle pull up, young lady got out, and I guess he was looking another direction or something, and all of a sudden she disappeared. Well, I'll come to find out, she come in the door down here. So there's apparently the judge is allowing for the work down there to come in and out that door. Well, as far as I'm concerned, that's a breach of security.
Yeah, there actually, um, Leanne up at the district court, um, mentioned adding a section in there about who specifically, uh, gets, not only gets access, but who authorizes the access.
Right.
That's something that we have nothing in writing anywhere right now. Uh, so that definitely be one of the things we discussed. I didn't, didn't know that.
Yeah, he called, he called Rick while we were sitting there, and Rick said, uh, that the judge apparently allowed for him to come in and out that door, but again, it's still a breach of security because nobody's watching that door, and if they don't latch that door, you know, or whatever, anybody can come in and out of it.
Right.
You know, and, and I think my understanding is the only one coming through that door should be officers with prisoners, and other than that.
That's it.
Even the sheriff and the undersheriff come through the other door and.
Are you talking this story, F O C? Doesn't probation?
That's the four that I think are coming through the door, but they need to walk the hallway, I guess. I don't think anybody needs to come through that door except for inmates with officers.
What's probation? I don't know.
Right down. Right down.
So it's just individuals walking through? They don't have somebody with them?
No, they don't have anybody with them.
No, it's the workers.
Well, just coming to work.
But there's the example.
But their office is in that hallway.
If they have access, they could bring somebody in with them. Well, exactly, exactly.
That's the, or concern.
Well, I think this, um, having these in the three doors accessible, um, even from the inside is a, is a security risk. If you're going to protect the bottom floor, like we're trying to do right now, I think you need, uh, probably a little bit of equipment. Put, uh, cameras on each of those doors so that it shows the outside of the building, and then get these guys a laptop or something down there on their desk where they can watch the cameras so that they can see people coming and going, and they could even have, uh, access to, to get it set up for Tom to, uh, actually, they could buzz people in that other door if they need in for, uh, uh, an officer or something like that.
I'm going to disagree. I, I think that takes away from our whole policy that we're, we're trying to build here. I mean, for emergency purposes, absolutely, but there's no reason those people can't walk through this door like everybody else.
I'm not saying they can't. I'm saying if, if it's a prisoner or an officer, okay, they could actually buzz them instead of just being able to get in. I mean, if you really truly want these doors secured, you got to have arms on them, and no one should be using them unless they get buzzed in.
Well, I think the pass keys, like I say, I think Tom has, I think he can, he can stop that, anybody coming through those doors, and that's exactly what needs to happen. If we turn around and get a new, new machine down here, literally, everybody needs to come through that machine, and I don't care who that is. From, you know, I mean, the judge will maybe disagree, but from the judge on down, everybody needs to come through, through the machine.
That's our whole purpose.
That's the whole purpose of it, and, you know, so they work, so they work down that hallway, they work down that hallway, well.
That's fine. If you're going to do it that way, that's, that's fine, but, um, those doors still have to be secured, and they're not secure at all.
They're not?
Not with them coming in there.
I agree on this, this county building security. I, I thought they were supposed to be, um, was supposed to be interpreted into this as far as keypads, who's got access, who doesn't. I think we need to go through all that again, make sure there's not bias going on. People can give rationale, who's coming in and out of their departments and why, if needed.
And frankly, I really side with the thought of, um, one person being the chief judge decides who's going to get in those doors. I don't think we need to go any further than that. We don't need to, you know, confuse, you know, th- this department wants that person to come through. No, it's only the judge, and that way we, we know where that approval authority lies.
Judge has approval of, are you talking about the doors? Are you talking about the, the department's access? I guess I'm confused.
About the doors, the department access, we leave to the department head. So if the treasurer wants this list of people to have access, fine. Uh, but as far as getting through the doors, everybody's fumbled through one entrance unless the judge has said otherwise, and we have that approval. Right now, Tom can do whatever he needs to do with the technology to make that work, but you have one person that's saying, okay, you can have access at this entry point.
That relieves the liability of.
But doesn't that take away from what you just said? What your concern just was, was that three people were given access, for whatever reason, we don't know. Somebody's watching them do this.
Right.
I mean, so I, I guess.
No, I, I know what you're saying. I disagree, but the judge is going to disagree with you. He's going to say, I'll, I'll, I'll whoever in.
And the judge, the judge's got the final say. Let's, I mean, who are we kidding? We all know that. Judge has the final say.
The ones that are coming through our state.
Regardless.
So why would they not come through the security? What would be the rationale?
You don't have to go.
Because their office. And then, you know, I didn't know what, uh, how to define, uh, this, not a part of this building. Is this the Oklahoma County building or is this the Oklahoma County courthouse?
Both.
Both.
But because it says court, that puts a single court category.
So.
The other option is to build a court somewhere, which I think may be a little more expensive than this.
I, I just think that, uh, fair to everybody that they need to come through that door, and if there's a security risk, then you leave it up to the security officer, um, who has direction from the judge as to who could come through a different door, and obviously that would be, you know, a very good reason, not just because I don't want to go over the third door.
Might be worthwhile, uh, inviting chief judge to the next, uh, committee of the hall, just to talk this through. Um, you know, certainly recognize and respect the authority of the judge, but here are the concerns we'd like you to consider.
Absolutely.
I do think that, uh, having a security officer, uh, be able to see the external shots of the doors would be very important.
Excellent.
Can see something coming before it gets to the door.
So we will put him on for the next committee of the hall. Your request?
Uh, request, and hopefully he'll be available.
Uh, for C or V ordinance?
Okay, you have a draft that came back from our attorneys, um, taking into account, I'm actually working from the uh, draft the sheriff presented last meeting. There are references in here to specific statutes, um, I think more, uh, well-defined definitions and so on, but, uh, the attempt was to capture everything that we've already discussed, correct the ordinance so that it complies or it references the right statutes, uh, and hopefully.
There's a lot of changes.
There were, and I think they're all pretty constructive. Item that, um, the attorney reminded me of is that we do have hearing requirements for this, so if we want to go forward with it, we'll schedule the hearing. We get that right amount of days and so on, uh, for publication. Um, but there are a lot of things in here that I frankly think will protect the county, particularly things like the savings clause that's in here, uh, not in our current ordinance, um, and again, an improvement. So, yeah, a lot of changes, but I think all, uh, hitting all the, uh, standard language that we need to hit and then making sure that we're hitting the right statutes in terms of our reference, because again, we can only pass ordinances that we've been told we can pass, uh, and we can't, uh, deviate otherwise. So again, anchoring that to those statutes, I think it's a very good idea.
Chef, do you want to come up? It's, the time on here was changed. Didn't, didn't you come to us? It was going to be eleven-thirty and on here it says eleven P M. It was eleven? Oh, I am sorry. I thought it was, I thought it was eleven-thirty.
Yeah, I, I haven't, I have not got a chance to look at, uh, that ordinance after our attorneys looked at it, so I have no idea what the changes are.
A lot. I, just wording, I guess, but I, I'm sorry. I thought it was eleven-thirty. It is eleven, you guys are saying?
Eleven, yeah.
My other thing, uh, my other question I had was as far as, uh, like ticketing. Where now, when we, um, where does the funding go? They're requesting fifty percent into the road commission to fix whatever it is they need to fix, and fifty percent into your guys' uh, what did it say? I read it.
So that's one of the changes.
Like into training for your, for the ORV ordinance or officer.
Apparently that's one of the changes that I'm not aware of, so.
Section ten.
I know, I read it.
Section ten.
Um, where does the funding go now for this? Do we know?
First of all, have we had any fines?
You don't have any? None?
From last year?
Was there anybody working it last year?
Not, well, we did have people out there, but not like we'd like to have them, so.
Okay, so in the past, where's the monies went? Do we know?
I have no idea.
Is this, I mean, this looks good. Fifty percent of the county road commission for repairing damages to the roads in the environment that may have been caused by ORVs and for posting signs indicating ORV speed limits or indicating whether roads are open or closed to the operation of ORVs, fifty percent to the county sheriff for ORV enforcement and training. I was just wondering how much monies this typically collects, and it's going to go from two-fifty to five-hundred plus court costs. Is that what I read? I think that's what I read.
That's what I read.
There's a lot in this.
I think the previous tickets were issued under state statute over the previous years, so that would be dictated by how the state does their fine distributions. With the new ordinance, tickets will be issued under the county ordinance, which will then be distributed by what's inside that, that ordinance there. That would be my intention.
Okay. So is, with this ordinance, is the boundary still? I didn't see anything in here, and I get confused by that boundary, so please. It was, uh, so like it didn't cover Mills Township. Is Mills Township now going to have to, to?
Well, that, this, this new, uh, ordinance would incorporate all townships. All township is going to allow the, the ATVs to, to travel in their areas unless they want to opt out of it. I mean, that's the way I had written it up.
Yeah, so section nine addresses that. Um, any township or municipality in the county can establish their own ordinance, and then this ordinance would not apply in that municipality.
So are we going to provide this to all of the townships since?
I would suggest that, and again, given the timetable, uh, that's involved, annoying ORV seasons coming up, that, uh, I would suggest that we go ahead and schedule the hearing. I'll have to look at the calendar and figure out what day that falls on, and in the meantime, this gets distributed to all the townships. They can provide input, and at the hearing or before, if you want to massage it earlier, but even at the hearing, make whatever changes they might suggest that make sense, and then get it adopted and to get it in place so that when the summer's here, we're ready.
And it's coming.
It's coming fast.
Yeah, I've discussed it with my townships out there, and, uh, they seem to be pretty, uh, pretty receptive of everything, you know, they very much want your road patrol out there stopping some of these people because you get, they get pretty wild out there. And, uh, I just had the draft that you drafted up.
Right.
You know, not this one here. I had seen this one, and it, but, uh.
And the only, I'm sorry, what?
Sorry, um, so defining an ORV, um, that's, that's roadworthy. If someone does not have a license and they are over the age of eighteen, can they drive a side-by-side on the side of the road?
You have a driver's license.
That's.
It has to be valid.
It's kind of confusing here.
State law.
Looks, it looks.
It's state law.
Stating that you can. In, uh, section eight.
Yeah, I don't know. I don't, I don't know if there's any changes on that, so.
Person is in possession of a valid driver's license or under the direct supervision or of a parent. Wording in this is confusing.
That was from our attorney.
Leave that for the court to figure.
Well, it's under the, it says under the age of eighteen. So if you're eighteen or older, you have to have a valid driver's license.
Person under eighteen years old shall not.
Yeah.
Operate it. Must have a driver's license.
Yeah, or under direct supervision of a parent or guardian.
They have to have the safety program.
Right.
You have to go through, and I think that it was twelve.
Driver's license, pretty low, over you after.
So what you're looking at, I haven't seen, so.
I, I, I like this. Uh, the only roads it exclude, it excludes, um, if I remember right, I'm thirty, I'm thirty, I seventy-five in the cities.
And we should, should incorporate, uh, the business loop by, I remember one.
It's in here.
Is it?
Yeah.
Yeah, if it's under state jurisdiction, okay.
Yep.
There you go.
It's going to be huge in Mills Township. Questions, guys?
Go forward.
So before, before next week, can you take a look at it and make sure you guys are in agreement with this and?
Sure, it'll be fine, yeah. Absolutely, I'd like to, yeah.
So do we approve this now before we give it to the townships?
No, um, what you'd want to do now is direct me to get the necessary hearing notices together, and forty-five days sticks in mind for some reason, so that's what we're looking at as far as review period. I'll figure out what date, um, the board meeting is, the regular meeting, and that's when we'll schedule the hearing. Can still talk about it between now and then, no, no problem with that, but we just definitely want a hard stop. We're going to have the hearing on this date at the goal of passing an ordinance on that date so we can get going on the enforcement.
And in the meantime, you're going to distribute it to the townships?
Right, I'll, uh, send it to anybody who wants to see it. Don't even need to foil it. We'll just send it out if you want it, uh, and then invite any comments to come back to me. I'll gather those and make sure that you see them. Continue to talk about it up till the hearing day.
Can you, without them asking for it, can you just send it out?
Oh, I'll do that with the townships. They, they'll get it.
Because they're going to say they didn't get it.
Well, they'll probably say that anyway, but, you know.
So just go ahead and do it.
Post it on the website as well.
Sure, yeah.
That's, yeah, I'm, I'm directing more people to the website.
Yeah, that's a good place to put stuff.
Thank you.
All right.
ARPA proposals.
Need to write and think, so.
Was this for the G P S? Is that what I'm?
Well, what I've done is given you where, where we are, you know, the list that you've already seen, and everything was, you know, projects one through four, you've already, uh, okayed funding for, uh, but there have been other projects that have come in. There is, uh, Motorola Solutions, uh, I think this was from uh, corrections, if I'm not mistaken. Radios or corrections?
Oh, I believe that one is all the better one together for replacements or handhelds.
Okay.
We have, uh, bank of handhelds that are becoming obsolete. Once they break, they become something more than paper plates.
Right, and I think you applied for a grant, but the grant didn't come, so that's why it, um, the request is now going over to ARPA. There is the city of West Branch request. You've seen that before for the, uh, housing that they wanted to do. You heard from the treasurer this morning, um, it's not a new request, but, uh, for the Lamb Bay. At this stage, uh, I just, this is a matter of keeping you informed of where, where this sits. We did get notice yesterday that this, uh, Department Treasury is about to release the second, uh, installment, so the second two million. Uh, the last place we left this was you really weren't that comfortable doing. The last place we left this was you really weren't that comfortable doing anything more until that money was actually in our hands, which I think is great strategy. So this is more or less an update at this point so that you, I just keep this in front of you. You see the projects as they come in. I don't suggest doing anything more at this stage. I will provide you an update as far as the projects you've already approved. Obviously, we did the vehicle already or equalization in for planning. I did get the information from Paul about the animal control vehicle. So that's moving along. There's some little things that we have to tweak in there to make sure we're getting what we want. The GPS, what I'll do, because that's looking like it's going to be more or less an off-the-shelf thing, just continue to pursue that. I was talking to Tom. There is already a module over at Dispatch that deals with GPS through Motorola. So it might be just something that we activate in terms of a new software add there and then we'll, would need to purchase the hardware that go in the vehicles or whatever that might be. So that might even be less than what we thought it was. And then finally with the annex building and RFP is going to be issued for that. I'd like to, when that RFP is issued, not only address what we already know we need to do literally from the ceiling up, but let's go ahead and get quotes for, you know, refreshing the paint in there and, you know, those minor maintenance things while we're already in there. Kind of tearing things up a little bit. Just get it all done in one swoop. You can decide when the proposals come back, whether or not you want to do that. We can carve that out if we need to. But just in my visits over there, I noticed, I mean, there's walls that have been patched but not painted. Just, it could be brought up to a better level without, I think, much more money being put into it. That's the update on where all that sits.
Um. The GPS was discussed at the nine one one. Just said that in their facility there, whatever, in their equipment, that it sounded like basically the stuff was there to, to do the GPSing. Where so would be pretty easy to do. So that's, you know, that's generally, you know, a plus for us. I think a money saver. Didn't seem like it was that expensive, the way they were talking. Another thing on here and it's down the list is Sting. I see the townships are starting to receive their billing, their yearly billing for that. Again, I would like to, you know, I know it's down on the list, but I'd like to see, I don't know about the opioid funds.
Got an update on the opioid funds. We thought they would be here in May, but it looks like it's going to be midsummer, but they are coming. So I think that's a, that's a very good source.
Right.
For funding for Sting. Right.
You were, you asked for Sting and what else, Rob? I'm sorry.
No, the Sting, the Sting money and whatnot, the, the townships are receiving their billing.
Okay.
Their billings for Sting right now. So they're, you know, they're on a hunt for their yearly monies, I guess, to operate and whatnot. So.
And we, we received something in the mail from Sting. I don't remember if it was Tuesday or Wednesday.
Yeah.
Haven't had a chance to dive into it yet, but I think that's what it is.
I'm sure it is. What, what it is.
There's Wednesday, so.
Right. Right. But I, I think it's a very worthwhile.
Definitely.
Thing.
I, I'm in favor and I know probably this isn't the time. I am in favor as well for the land bank. Each one of my townships have received a letter. There's some controversy at Mills Township and I don't know what the supervisor was stating was correct. Whether it may be illegal for them to use their funding to clean up land that doesn't belong to them or properties that doesn't belong to them. They did discuss ARPA funds for that. They have the two properties over there right now. Prescott's looking at a property as well. They'll seem a little reluctant because I, I guess they, they seemed a little hesitant as far as how this would benefit them at a local level. Um, which I didn't quite understand because obviously when you clean up properties, they're worth more and people will buy and build and move in and pay taxes and that, that impacts them locally versus just the county. But of course, it was, it was more based towards economy level. I, I'm in huge favor of that land bank. I am a hundred thousand. I think it's a little steep. I think twenty thousand would be get them up and running and moving and that would help my township significantly. Twenty twenty-five. You guys want to do with the hat?
Well, I'm not prepared to do anything until we get the next round of money in our hands. Till it's in the bank.
Opioids, it's close enough that the attorney's handling that sent an email to me asking for our routing and account numbers so that the check will be deposited. In being very mindful of cybersecurity, I will be calling the attorney to make sure they sent that and we're just not going to send that information out you know, to just anybody, but it's that close.
You're talking about these opioid funds and that aren't done yet. Is your dollar amount actually watching for to come in?
Not yet. There's still a little bit of work going on with the state in terms of what the distribution will be to the locals. So I'll tell you, it will be substantial. You will notice something I missed when it comes in. There are going to be some accounting requirements that we'll need to abide by. We'll have to be set up in a special fund. Similar to what we did with ARPA and there'll be some probably reporting requirements that we'll have to do along the way, but not anything we're not used to doing anyway. But there'll be some very specific rules that you'll be seeing.
No, is it, is it something that we can do like, because we've got on here for Sting, like ten dollars? Is it something we can set up and say a hundred thousand dollars, but it's set up over ten years?
The opioid monies will be distributed over eighteen years. So there's, it'll be, you know, time released, if you will, but we'll know exactly what's coming in then for each year. If we want to commit to Sting for over multiple years, that's, that's how we do it. We just make sure those monies are designated. The individual who was going to be here today is runs a treatment center in Gaylord. They service all of Northern Michigan. I think you're going to start seeing a parade of those providers come before you. Just to let you know what they provide and perhaps encourage us to write a check there as well. But you'll start seeing more and more of that as word spreads.
That five thousand for that Northern Michigan Children's Assessment Center. Could that come from that? Probably not.
I'm going to say probably not in that case because it's not related to opioids directly, but we'll see what kind of interpretations there are. I mean, you could make an argument.
Okay. Um, can we find out that answer from our attorney as far as if the townships, if that is indeed true, that shouldn't cost us any money since they're on retainer, correct?
Right.
That they cannot spend out of their general fund monies to clean up properties that the county owns. Because Prescott's going to have a couple as well, the village there. So I think that's the answer that we, we need.
Okay.
Clear, not clear as mud. Hey, are we good? For administrator performance review.
All right. We did a big data dump. You've got a lot of examples that are here. Commissioner Scott provided some that are here. We added a couple. Just a few comments and I'll speak freely because it says in my contract, I have to participate in this, right? So and help develop. You know, there are in these examples, some very good categories. And so what we'll want to do is come up with what your final list of categories would look like. And then look at the scoring criteria. And I'm just looking at the very first one. I think what we need to do is settle on what it means to say meets expectations. What does it mean to be you know, below expectations or what those standards are? And that definition then can follow with every one of these topics that follow. So whether it's a one to five scale, one to ten, whatever it is, very consistent across the board. Now I want to emphasize, yes, we're, you, we want to do the review of past performance. But really I would prefer to also see an emphasis on moving forward, what the expectations are. This kind of works out to strategic planning session in, in many ways. There are some things that you'll want to see me accomplish over the coming years and goals that you might want to see established. Well, not only does that give us a measure that we can use a base measure for next year, but it also says these are the things we really want to focus on and get done. So whatever those might be. Okay, I already mentioned that the, the scoring I know was discussed last time. Should it be one to five, one to ten, one to a hundred? You know, whatever. There's not a wrong answer, but I would say that higher the number, one to a hundred, one to a thousand, the return that you receive on doing that is probably diminished. You know, is it, you know, a score of fifty-nine? Well, how does that differ from a score of sixty-five? Well, it's not pretty much moving the scale.
I would say one to ten.
I really like the cities, city of West Branch.
And let me, let me throw this over there, Jane. That one from the city of West Branch is what they use for their department heads. If I'm not mistaken, they are in the process right now, doing one specifically for the city manager. I talked to Ellen Pugh, who was kind of ramrod that side of the, the revision of theirs, updating of it and stuff. I talked to her on Monday. I asked her when she gets that, if she would forward that to me. I talked to Tim about that, told him that that would be coming. I'm not sure exactly when it is. She was hoping, I think, to get it done this next week to get it to the city. And I keep looking at Paul, of course, because he's the mayor of the city. And so, but anyway, they're, they've got one that they're specifically tailoring for the city manager evaluation. This one that's in here is for what they use for the department.
I like everything about this. There's clear definitions. So if there's any questions, I mean, you have a rationale of why, why, why you rated what, how you rated. I really like this. I thought it would be very good for what we could utilize it for.
So maybe one more coming from the city. So.
Okay.
You know, and we can, we can marry them together as we see fit.
Thought it was simple.
You know. I, I don't, I'm not disagreeing with you. I'm just saying.
No, I agree. We just, some of these were very complex that they, I, I didn't even read them all because, yeah.
Deep in the weeds.
Yeah, way too deep for me. Did you guys have an opportunity to look at these?
Yeah, the cities is definitely the best one. But I think we should wait and see if there's any, any other ones that come out.
Dave, what did you think about the cities?
I, same, same position you took. Get back, I think. Commissioner Serb was in and I might've said that that one was probably almost in line with what we were looking at and then don't think there's a you know, we don't want to spend two weeks going over these and thinking and choosing and.
No.
Together. If there's something out there that really looks like it works, let's not regrade the wheel. And I, my view was exactly what was expressed. I thought that was very, very well done.
It is. It's very well defined. It's very simple. This could be utilized for numerous, numerous evaluations that for any where in luck. Tell me, I would think.
Agree.
Okay. So we have one more coming. When you said?
She's hoping to get the draft version of it. I believe she told me next week. Yeah. Because I think she wants to present it at the next city council, which would be a week from this, week from this Monday for them to review. So.
Based on him and his experience there. So some of that is a tweak based on his input. Yeah, still have to sit down with the city manager and make sure.
You just put a lot into this.
You know, we had hard lessons to learn. We tried to incorporate those two lessons learned and best practices.
So we'll put it out in two weeks. What is your timeframe? You wanted this?
Yeah, my start date was May eighteenth, so sometime in May.
Oh, so we're good. So we'll put it out in two weeks and you'll have a copy. Will you send us a copy of that when that's available?
I will do that. I will get it to Tim and I will let him disseminate it.
Because I'm perfectly fine using the one I'm looking. But, okay. So are we good with that?
Yes, ma'am.
So we should have, unfortunately, we should have moved five public comment prior to the closed session. So are you guys okay with that?
Yes.
Is there any public comment in the room? Any agenda items? Any public comment on the phone? Hi, Mom. Is there any public comment on the phone? Right, doesn't know how to take it off mute. Okay. So we're going to go into a closed session, but there's not going to be any, any business after closed session, correct?
Right, correct.
So I need a motion.
I would make emotionally move into a closed session to discuss strategy and negotiation, connect proposed amendments and collective bargaining agreement between Ogumon County, Ogumon County Sheriff and Timsers Local Two Fourteen Corrections Officer, permitted under section eight C of the Opens Me Neck. Be compiled law fifteen point two six eight parent C.
Good job, Commissioner Serb.
Support.
Sir, but with support from Fisher Mad. Welcome to my world. Can we get a roll call vote on that?
Benny David.
Yes.
Ron Vaughn. Brian McRae.
Yes.
We're going to go into a closed session at ten forty-five. Is Tom, Tom, are you on?
Yes, let me put him in the waiting room here. Not for me.
Did you want, you want us in?
Yes, so else I was going to ask.
Make a motion to come back in the open.
A motion with support to come back in a open session? Roll call vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. I think I technically need to say your names. Brad.
Yes.
Next. Mark.
Yes.
And he has. Ron.
Next.
Now we have a motion.
Want you to adjourn?
With support at eleven oh one.
I.
All in favor?
I.
Oppose. Motion carries.
Just Sunday now, I guess.
Oh, I hope so. Who technically just adjourned that?
I made the motion.
Okay.
And I supported, okay.
Yeah.
Seventy-four, Saturday?
Oh, yeah, it's supposed to be warm.
Yeah.
And then cold again.
Yeah.